Um. Looking for measurements. They've scored the therapy top part first, Jerry, and they didn't get them all, but for the one in April. Uh, there's not much for me to really go into what's getting to be the ad nauseam of uh hazard removal over at the fire airport. So I would point you out item number three, airport manager and under new business, read that thoroughly and you'd be pretty well up to date on what we're doing. They had another meeting on May eighth, which I did not attend because I was just to purchase a. The U T V that's gonna, four seater that's gonna serve as mainly running things back and forth, the planes and can be used for. If there's some uh people that, you know, makes a walk, you know, from their plane to the terminal, so. And we did mentioned um briefly uh about the updating of the terminal building itself, and that's. In the infant state, so to speak. Oh, I have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Fisher Stewart, police and fire commission.
Thank you. Um, we met last May seventh. We welcomed newly appointed Commissioner Tim Martin to our, to his first meeting. Um, we uh. Announced that the fire department first responder candidate Gunner Palm. And police department part-time officer Jesse Kirkay both completed and passed the physicals um after completing the other phases of uh education. And they were both placed on eligibility to hire list for newly expected chiefs and the village administrators to work out. And they start. Um, we also announced newly revised subcommittees. We have subcommittees, one liaison for the fire department, one for the police department. And the fire department is uh liaison team is Leo Thomas Guard and uh Tim Martin and the police is Andrea Wyland and myself. As I said earlier, Mason Check started and I was in his role as full-time police officer and he's doing well. Went in a call session and reviewed results of some. Interviews conducted of, of a first responder applicant and um also the background investigation. And that was successful and we sent him on to take a medical test and we're pending uh results of that. Will be good. We're all caught up, so we probably will not be meeting in June. We'll probably meet in July if needed, but um. We're all, all good to go now. No questions from anyone? I can answer.
Any questions? No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, plan commission. All right, then we will go to public works committee. Chairman Sailor.
Uh, we met on April twenty-third. Um. Just got an update from Ben on summer help, some Ripple Creek. Culver things that were gonna happen. Um. Went over the capital equipment and road plans. Um, that Ben does a very good job on keeping up to date on his spreadsheets. Uh, talked about how much it costs for brush pickup and stuff. Other than that, nothing really burning. Um, next meeting will be May twenty-eighth at five o'clock.
Any questions for Chairman Sailor? Moving right along. Trustee Hummel Parks in recreation.
Hi, we've met on um April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. I have an apology that I mis- uh read when we meeting started, so I missed uh. Uh nineteen of the twenty-nine minute meeting. Uh, and that won't happen again. I apologize. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ben and see if he actually was there and could fill you in on, on what took place. Ben?
Experiment. Um, so parks right now, we're just getting them ready. Obviously, spring is here. Um, so we're getting everything cleaned up, ready to, ready to go. Um, don't see any issues with our um maintenance or nothing of our parks. Um, so I think we're good to go. The splash bed, we're gonna be getting that fired up here um tomorrow, and I hope by Memorial Day weekend, well, that'll be up and operating. Um, like President Mansa said, we did some tree planting um May first with the ecology club. Um, that wasn't good. We planted a tree in Ripple Creek Park, so that was always a good activity. Been doing that last couple of years. Um, we also went over our five and ten-year plans um for cemetery, cemetery in the parks. So we kind of, you know, have our things that need repaired, things that we need to purchase, things that we need to upgrade to try to keep our parks up to high levels for our, all of our residents. Um, we're in the process of applying for another five hundred thousand there grant from Legacy for Ripple Creek. Um, like I've stated in the last couple of years, our playground equipment at Ripple Creek is almost twenty-seven years old and, and it needs repair. No matter what happens, grant or not, that equipment at Ripple Creek Park will get pulled out this fall, just to do the safety issues now. So we got around two of the legacy. I got a presentation next week Tuesday that I go to and uh see what we come up with and hopefully get some grant money to um. Replace Ripple Creek playground equipment and um pickleball courts and some other activities on Ripple Creek Park to uh keep those running good. Uh, we also talked about our bike trail. Um, that project is in motion. Uh, we're looking for a completion of July. Um, hopefully it stays on track, but stays dry. Um, so that um. Look for that activity, keep coming. We did talk about the, the budget numbers and went over that and we're, it's gonna be right around, you know, five or ten thousand, depending where everything's gonna come. Um, every day it changes when you're doing any kind of road work and stuff like that out there, but I might think we're gonna be on target to finish that project with that grant that was received from the village. Um, so other than that, um, I'll have for the parks.
Questions? See that.
Is what value is that supposed to be? Apply for grant twenty twenty-one received.
Five hundred thousand.
Looks like there's just an extra zero in there.
Five hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's still five hundred thousand that previous administration received for.
In twenty twenty-two.
For us, for a bike show is gonna go through D M I property that we uh revised it to go to Port Road.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else that works for me? Oh, anything else, Chairman Hummel?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, moving on to public safety. Chairman Sluger.
Um, again, we met on April twenty-third, just like everyone else. Um. Real brief updates from both chiefs. Um, fire department has received a couple of grant programs, some funding to do that. Uh, Chief Lee Stedding informed us about a community CPR and first aid class that's gonna be held. Um, Dave T B P. Fee also to be determined. This will be open to the general public, being held at the fire station just for community members that might have interest in uh receiving that. American Heart Association certification. Uh, current enrollment or excuse me, current membership is twenty-one. Um. As Chairman Stewart said, um, one applicant right now in the fire department process?
Yes.
Okay. So hopefully it will be up to twenty-two after next month. Uh, police department gave a real brief update. We met um Officer Check for the first time there. Um, did mention, Chief Evan mentioned that citations are up slightly. Um, and they're gonna be meeting with Urkel to talk about some equipment that uh Urkel is looking to purchase for the village. Um, otherwise relatively uneventful. Next meeting will be scheduled at four thirty on May twenty-eighth, just like everything else.
Any questions? Questions for Chairman Sluger? Oh, perfect. Thank you. All right, Chairman Hess, planning legislative and property.
Yeah, planning property and legislative committee met on April twenty-third. Um, we met at five thirty. Uh, we had uh several discussions on several topics. We had an update on D M I. Um, we really haven't been getting any information from them and I'll let uh Ben update it. We are looking at trying to work with Kansas State to see if there's any um avenues that we can pursue to try to get them some, get D M I to move. We're also trying to discuss some other avenues to try to leverage them, um either from a political side or the media side. To see if we can get D M I to move and try to get some movement on that property. Uh, the one sixty market Ave is, they are, they met with Al, Alman Construction, they're waiting for a bid. And waiting, the contractor is gonna be giving them information. When, when we have that information, we'll pass it on. Um, Ben, do you have anything on D M I?
Um, no, other than I send my weekly emails out and uh no response.
Okay, thank you. Any update on one sixty other than what I stated?
Um, no, I sent them an email last week asking if they've heard anything from Alman Construction. He said he's still waiting for the numbers to come back from Alman.
Okay.
So the ordinance tickets are still getting issued by the police department on a weekly basis for that building at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, update on TIF loan from Cyber One. Um, do you wanna quickly go through? Cause you had most of the conversations.
Um, yeah, so we obviously put a deadline of um late April for them to get back to us with a plan. Um, I sent that to the committee members. Um, the plan is a fifteen hundred dollar a month, which you're supposed to be paying now. They're gonna double that payment. And then beginning in June, they're gonna give us an additional thousand dollars. Um, so I did confirm with that. That means fifteen hundred plus fifteen hundred plus another thousand. And that was what Jamie replied back. That is what we're gonna be doing. So um this time I'll keep you guys updated, the pit committee by month. To make sure we're receiving the payments and um guess that's all we can, can do, try to hold them, hold them accountable and I'll let you guys know if we don't receive those per month.
At what point then will that bring them current?
No, they're twenty-some thousand behind. I don't have the exact.
They're paying three thousand extra.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're paying, they're gonna be paying um before twenty-five hundred extra, so.
Okay.
As of June.
So twenty-seven thousand, yeah, they're gonna be.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, then seed grant discussion. You had a conversation with Jason at Wood County. Do you wanna share?
Um, so I met Jason on here uh two weeks ago um to discuss the um admin building that is owned by Wood County. Um, and talk about our seed grant. Um, obviously our seed grant was, was taken out last year. Um, previous administration to be um a match one-to-one. Uh, D M I was gonna be part of that. Original agreement, what I was applied for was D M I would have a demo grant, demo grant, a demo permit hold. There'd be demo work and we'd be using that C grant to be talking about development, um what the next step was gonna be. Um. So I talked to Jason and Jason recommended that I come to um the Wood County meeting last week, their seed committee meeting. And um just explain them where we're at now, you know. Unfortunately, I told the committee that we're, at this point, we're not gonna accept the grants because we don't have anything. In stone moving forward with that. Um, the grant opens again in July, so we can apply again. And um the committee members on that committee definitely told me, you know, if the village has, has some. Plans, development to come back and apply for that grant. So they were respectful that we were not just going to take that grant and. And not use the funds or it was allocated for. Um, and definitely encouraged us to apply again for it. Um, so we're starting that conversation with Jason and Kansas, Kansas to see if we can't put something together to work on the admin building. To get some kind of plan moving forward and the grant could be applied for the village with Kansas on that admin building. So that is where we're at with the seed.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, the next discussion point we talked about, we spent a fair amount of time talking about um allowing chickens in the village. We've been approached to see if uh the village allows chickens or doesn't allow chickens. So we had some discussion. Um, what the committee would recommend is that we go out and solicit. And um feedback from the village residents to see what the thought process is, if they would like to have chickens or not have chickens. Rather than just the committee deciding what um either yes or no. So there is a motion. Um, I think we need a motion. Um, I guess I was asking. That we have a town hall meeting to get solicit feedback from the village residents. To see why we, we would wanna let them have chickens in the input and then we can take that information back to committee. And then um if we deem that it's appropriate to have chickens and we will put some guidelines around it. And then come back to the board with a proposal for allowing chickens. So. Um, I guess I'm looking for a motion to solicit feedback via town hall meeting, which the committee would attend. I would attend.
Is there a motion? Oh, Rick, did you make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Brick's making motion. Motion by trustee Hess, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Fluger, discussion.
I have questions, so that's why I seconded. Um, non-binding, obviously, correct. There's no official.
Right.
We're gonna be sending out two or three different options, proposals, solicit feedback.
Non-binding.
And the ultimate authority would still end up with the L P.
Correct, then ultimately to the board, yes.
Board.
Because I, the discussion really is, I think there's some chickens that are out there right now, but we don't really have any guidelines and according to all of our ordinances. It says that we don't allow them from what past practice has been, but so either we're going to either fine tune the ordinances or we're going to. Come up with a, a modified um ordinance to be able to handle them. And you had your hands up, so.
Trustee Chair Flue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, pardon, Madam President. Um, why do you have a motion? Can't, can't you or the president just? Put a public notice in the paper that the village will be yada, yada, yada?
We had discussion about that. I was uncertain on that.
We were just uncertain, so we just.
I don't see why you'd need a motion.
Okay.
You can ask the expert and C can't answer, then you would go to uh.
We had this discussion as well. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, as the president, the chair of P L P, I think can just.
Rather be safe than sorry if we don't need a motion, then we can't, do I withdraw the motion?
Nick, yada, yada, yada. No, you don't need a motion. Okay, yeah, you do need a motion. I was like, shut up.
I can, I, I can do that.
But for consensus?
We already have it out there.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't hurt really. So realistically, this is going, is this gonna be another meeting? So this will cost the village money to do so in a minimal for another meeting for three trustees.
Right.
So I can see the benefit in doing that because it's costing another seventy-five dollars for the village. However, you also.
Something else too. Can the, can the committee sit again like that? Or does uh, if it's just to gather information or do you just have? Uh, loose? I don't know what the word I'm looking for, the president or somebody just to kinda. You know, get the information from the people. You're not gonna wanna get in, yeah, you're not gonna wanna get in a big discussion about it. You're there to find out. I just.
I mean, I think it'd be more of like a listening session. So like, we get it around here, people can come. I, I like chickens, I hate chickens, I don't care about chickens. And so just listen and make no necessarily motions or decisions that night. It's just to receive the feedback.
I like chickens and if my neighbor has chickens and they come on my yard, that chicken won't make it back home on your own teeth.
You like barbecue chicken. Okay.
He likes eating chicken. Um, so do we need to vote on that or do we need to withdraw?
Well, you need to vote on it or you can withdraw, but.
So the plan is to basically solicit village resident feedback so we can uh have more information to go with in committee and then come back to the board. And we may, may or may not have a lot of chickens, so.
Okay, do you?
Um.
You can vote, I don't have.
We can vote then.
Okay. So motion to solicit village resident feedback via town hall meeting to allow chickens in the village. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Who was the? You went, okay.
There are.
Okay. Okay, that carries them.
Okay, thank you.
Just for some clarification, is, is Rick gonna be getting with me then to plan that or that, how we're gonna go forward with that?
Yeah. Now we'll have to.
And if I may, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as I told you on the phone this afternoon, my uh anti-feelings of what we went through a little over thirty years ago. I had black hair more of it. I was not the chief, I wore a silver badge, good old days. And we had somebody up on Upper Forest Street that had chickens and it was nothing but a, but. I can do this and I can do this and the chickens ran the heck out over everybody else's field or yards and so. I just think it's Pandora's box waiting to be opened again. That's my personal feeling.
Yep. The, the thought process from the committee was if we do allow them, then there's gotta be guidelines and you have to follow where you don't have it.
We have, we have a lot of guidelines and a lot of, a lot of state law.
Yep.
And this all could be moot if the state brings by some.
Right, cause that's how this originally started was people brought, brought, you know, asked about it. There's a, there was that state uh movement at the state level. I haven't seen anything come any further than I did a couple of months ago.
That would be my next question. Is it even in still form yet or it's just discussion?
It's hasn't moved out of committee from my.
The bill, the bill hasn't moved. The bill was brought in early January and has not moved.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're just trying to do our due diligence. Okay, continuing discussion, we are, the committee is looking at updating the village ordinances mostly from a title perspective. Um, so we're gonna be starting to go through that. Um, and then there was an ad hoc Neppol Lake Committee. Do you wanna comment? Trustee Hummel on any?
Ben, Ben ran the meeting, so I defer to you.
Okay. Um, so we had a ad hoc committee meeting to talk about the um Neppol Lake development, I guess you could say maybe. Um, the only change you have is we talked to what having um Roll and Hawk, Roll Hawk was not on there. It ended up to be. Um, Al Kreider is, that was the, um, it was on that spot. So it was uh Eric Humble, Joe Terry, Lyer Isaacson. And Al Kreiter around the committee and myself. Um, just, we ran off the agreement, the base of the original development agreement between. The village, Saratoga and developer and kinda went through that. Um. Obviously, I was, it was kinda new to me how this got started. Um, Joe Terry was able to give some background, how this originally got started from, from the start and. And kind of, I think I've learned a little bit. It wasn't an easy pass. Um, it took some time to even get this into motion. Um, and so we answered some questions on the agreement. We have one question that we're gonna. Um, look into that was in the agreement. Um, and um since then, we've had the committee members have sent me some questions. Um, we'll be looking to put another meeting together in June. Um, and in the meantime, I'll get some research and have uh. An agenda and some information so they can discuss some, some other items. Not to have concerns about on that, but it was a good discussion. It's about a hour and a half meeting and um. Nothing, like I said, nothing came out, but there was some clarity and some other things that came out of it. So I think it was a good, a good meeting. So it's uh trustee Hummel was anything to add to that.
Uh, I second what you said.
Yeah, thank you. Next meeting date is uh five twenty-eight at five thirty P M. And I'll have to, Ben is not gonna be able to make it, but I'll have to touch base with him after the meeting.
Okay. Anything else for P L P? No. Okay, F H R. Chairman Randy isn't here, so would either trustee Fluger or trustee Hummel like to take F H R?
Yes. Obviously, as you can see, it was a brief meeting. We met on May eighth. Um. No uneventful bills or things of that nature. We had some questions about what things look like on the uh list of expenses and expenditures. Uh, trustee Hummel wanted to know what late fees look like and why they're called the way they were. Um, has some questions about budgetary process, timelines. Parameters, things of that nature. We'll be discussing that next month. Um, as President Mansell and Administrator Martenson were at the meeting, um, we are going to. Cable the review of the five to ten-year plans from department heads until next meeting. Um, so those will all be brought, we'll discuss those, bring those back for discussion in next village board. Um, are, you wanna give an update on the I T aspect of it? You've been talking to Brian a lot more than I have.
Um, so you know, the server is here. It's actually in the village offices. Um, they've been doing remote work on that. I'm not an I T person, so. Um, I kinda go back and forth with Brian, send him a email every couple of weeks, see where we're at. Um, sounds like, I know they've been working on the jail. It sounds like we're getting pretty close to getting that finalized, so. In the next couple of weeks, I think we're gonna be working hard to get the village server up and running. Um, I have been working with um. You trustee that have the iPads, getting those updated basically at Wood County. Um, and having the trustees pick them up that way, we know. Everything they want, they can access and get through that. Um, so I did kinda have a firm conversation with Brian on the phone. And, and I'd really like to have this thing wrapped up. By early July, we start getting into water, water bills and also as we talked about in a little bit of a budget process and other things, we'll get. Early conversations. I wanna try to have all that wrapped up um by July, so I have a. A verbal conversation with Brian to have everything hopefully wrapped up by July. Um, we have a couple of computers that we need for office staff, so. I'll keep you guys updated, but I'm pushing for July to get that wrapped up.
Uh, next meeting is scheduled for June sixth, four thirty P M.
June sixth or June fifth?
Is it dumb? I'm sorry, whatever.
Fifth is a Thursday.
Did I look at the wrong one? Yeah, fifth.
Okay.
The Thursday. I just looked at my calendar real quick while someone else is talking. My apologies.
All right, anything else on F H R? No? Okay, number eight, unfinished business. Does anybody have anything? No. Hearing none, moving on to number nine, new business. New business. Yeah. All right, number ten, report from village administrator.
Um, we've got a couple of motion I'm looking for you guys to make. Um. The first one is to combine Lot thirty-three and Westport Heights subdivision. Um, we have an owner there right now that's looking to purchase some property. A small chunk from the, our owner, owner owns a big property that was purchased, the Daryl Baziner um field, so. Um, if you guys can make that mark, make that motion, please, for the first one.
Okay, the motion to approve Wood County certified survey map combining Lot thirty-three of Westport Heights subdivision with part of. Any quarter of, N W quarter of section thirty-five township twenty-two north range five east owner Douglas and Kathy Schultz. Do I have a motion?
So will.
Move by Hess. There a second? Second by Fluger, discussion.
What uh, what's the intention of how that property is going to be used?
Um, so the gentleman that's there now is a house. He just like an extra um forty feet of property. Doesn't have any, doesn't have any plans for it. He just. He's always had the space next to him that's been open for a big field for a lot of years and he just liked to keep the privacy between. The, I guess I would say the big field in his lot, so um the owner had no problem selling a little piece of the, his um property, I think, which is almost over thirteen acres, so. Just, just to get a property bigger, so there's a little border between him and the neighbor.
They're adding this piece. They're adding this piece?
Yes, they're adding C two.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, is along Ripple Creek there, there's an easement, right, for the village? So why is there?
But easement is, we brought this up many, many owners that we've had that easement actually stops there. It starts. On Port, on Rebunker, it runs there and it actually stops. Um.
That's right there.
Yes. I don't know why, but uh we brought that up when previous owners, we looked into it. Um, Daryl was around, I talked to him, you know, we. The spot below there going from that black line all the way to Rebunker had an easement, but the easement stopped there.
Okay, so that's not the village's property right through that little square. Then right next to five oh three two C five.
No, no, the creek is right there, but there is no, village has, there's no right of way running all the way on the edge of the pond.
The village has the easement.
The village has the easement west.
Correct, so we've got a storm sewer pipe that runs down there into the creek.
Yeah.
Off of, uh, Shellport.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion was by Hess, second by Fluger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That one carries. Okay, next one.
The next one is exterior, um, certification for Saratoga. Um, anytime that there's a CSM change between adjoining properties that join them to the village to pull every Saratoga, other areas, they show us the map for, for our approval. Um, so that is just what is going on here in the township of Saratoga.
So will.
Motion, hi, Zerflue. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hess. Discussion on that one. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That one carries.
The last one I have, um, so Janet Smith reached out to me, uh, her last week and wanted to know if the village would talk about the Heartland Home for the housing. And I said, I'm not gonna make that decision. I said, you send me a formal request and I'll bring it to the board underneath my report and ask them if they'd like to invite you and invite Janet to come to the next PLP meeting to, um, give her reason why she sent this letter and what her questions are. And at that point, the committee can decide, um, I know it was brought up, I think, a year ago. Again, the committee can decide at that point to further the conversation or end it right there since it was brought up. Um, but I'm just passing you guys on the information she gave to me. I was not gonna tell her yes or no with that. But my recommendation would be, um, have her come to the next PLP meeting and she can speak or whatever, and you guys can make that decision if we move forward on it or if we, how we handle this.
Would she come to the May twenty eighth meeting?
Yeah, I could see if I can get her soon, whenever you.
Or we could do June.
We can do June meeting, probably the June meeting.
Yep, uh, cause I would prefer to have you there.
Okay.
That is the purpose of the meeting then, to, uh, request to relitigate what the board decided last year? Is that, is that what?
I think, I think you just let her give her presentation. We can decide if you even wanna, you know, she gets the three minutes or like every other public and public person gets coming to a meeting. And at that point, you guys, I mean, we can put on the agenda for next month or you don't have to.
Okay. Sounds like that.
Yep.
It is to relitigate, but.
If the conversation is the same as it was last year, it'll be a real short conversation, huh?
Yeah, listen to or see what she has to say.
See if the tune has changed.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Report from third treasurer.
Hey, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve a temporary class B beer license for Port Edward's Firefighters Athletic Association, Inc. For one event, June thirteenth, twenty twenty five at three PM, through June fourteenth, twenty twenty five at one AM.
So will.
Move by Zerflue. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Fluger. Discussion. Questions? No? Okay. Um, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That one carries.
Yeah, so like to ask for a motion to approve an operator's license for Jeffrey Ably for the Port Edward's Firefighters Athletic Association, valid through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
So will.
Motion by Zerflue.
Second.
Second by Hess. Any discussion on that?
Is that always a year?
Yeah. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That one carries. Okay. Anything else, Dan? Okay. The number twelve trustee comments. Anybody have anything? No, okay. Many, meeting calendar. And where? So on the twenty eighth, we have, starting at four o'clock, public safety. Four, nope, four o'clock is parks, sorry. Four thirty is public safety.
Correct.
Five o'clock is public works. ELP is at five thirty.
Correct.
FHR is six five at four thirty.
Correct. You can read it down better than I can.
Obviously not. I just screwed that one up before then, so, okay.
What was the date of FHR again?
The fifth, June fifth. Okay. Without objection, I will adjourn the meeting at seven forty two.
Thank you. Can I go back in church?
Three and one day? Oh, yeah.
I've already done four and one day.